All right. Everyone ready? I call this meeting of the North Liberty Planning Commission to order Tuesday, April 6th, 2021. Roll call.
Ahearn.
I see him.
I'm here.
There you go. Becky. Here. Heisler.
Here.
Kio.
Here.
Marx.
Here.
Pentecost.
Here.
Saber.
Here.
All right. Approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Ask me a second.
Moved by Saber. I heard second by Bathke. All in favor, say hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay. You will hear my children in the background possibly. It may sound like they're injuring each other. They are not. They are just fine. Let's see. Agenda item number three, a request for a zoning map amendment from RS6 to RD10 on the west side of North Liberty Road. Staff presentation.
I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Okay, here's the location of the property. Just mentioned west side of North Liberty Road, about 700 feet north of Solon Drive. Try and... Okay, current zoning is RS6. In fact, that was recently rezoned by City Council to RS6. And the proposed zoning is RD10, which is a two-unit residential district. So RD10 is allowed for basically zero lot, single-family homes. Minimum lot size is 9,000 square feet. Each side or each unit would have 4,500 square feet. And the lot width is 80 feet. Or each side would be 40 feet. Comprehensive plan in this area is all residential. So certainly, staff's opinion that a residential request for residential zoning would be consistent with that. And here's the description of residential land use. And I pulled out a couple policies from a comprehensive plan. I guess the one I wanted to focus on a little bit is to establish and maintain, and this is a policy related to land use for residential, establish and maintain advantageous property tax situation and pursue strength and sound tax base through diversification of land uses, including commercial industrial development, as well as a variety of residential options. And Ryan actually forwarded this to me today, and I thought it was interesting to look at. Obviously, being a newcomer to this area, I knew it was an expensive place to live. But this is a median home value. Median home value is half, half or above, half or below. But between 2015 and 2019, five-year estimate, Johnson County came over just over 227,000 is the median income. And we are second behind Dallas. And the Iowa median income is 147,000. But I just thought that was interesting to look at as we just kind of want to reiterate how important it is to diversify our housing type, because single-family homes here are very expensive. And it puts the affordability out of reach for people. And so I think Pat could probably attest, the new single-family homes that are coming online are pretty expensive. And so I think it's important to diversify our housing type in this, in the community. We did have a neighborhood meeting.
Russ, can I just correct you real quick? I believe you said median income. And just to be clear, this is median home value.
Thank you, Ryan. We did have a neighborhood meeting, virtual one. Lauren Hoffman and Pat Scanlon attended. There was two people there. They didn't voice objections. They were just curious. The one neighborhood representative for Arlington Ridge actually mentioned that she supported the two-unit residence district because it allowed for affordable homes for people. So again, staff's opinion that RD10, and I just want to go back up just a little bit to our zoning map. To the north is ID, and that's the school property. Obviously, surrounding to the west and south is RS6. It'll be incorporated in this development. Across the street is ID, and the portion of the county property is in our district, which is a lower-density residential district. And so... So staff's opinion that RD10 zoning would be consistent with comprehensive plan. We also believe it's compatible with surrounding zonings and uses. It actually, it's a higher density north of the roads and arterial road. So I think having a higher density closer to that, as well as the school, makes it compatible with the surrounding zonings or future zonings. So the findings zoning mechanism with comprehensive plan and the zoning and use of the property would be compatible with the area. Staff recommends the planning commission accept the two list of findings and forward the request to the city council with the recommendation for approval. That's all I have.
Thanks, Ryan. Is there an applicant presentation this evening? I see a thumbs up.
Yes, may I have the table?
All yours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commission. I'm Lauren Hoffman with Hall &amp; Hall Engineers. I'm here along with Pat Scanlon. I just, I know Pat has a little bit to say about the house, housing type and offering another price point, but I just wanted to just put a plug in for, you know, the need for having diversity. I am, I have credentials in LEED ND, which is Leadership in Energy, Environmental and Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design with an emphasis on neighborhood development. And one of the main objectives of healthy neighborhoods as per LEED ND is to have a mix of homes. And, and so, and it's, and it's actually recommended to have, you know, pockets of what might be a little bit higher density mixed in with, you know, a lower density. And by no means is, you know, duplex is considered high density. We feel it's a very appropriate location for duplexes. We are basically providing a buffer on two of the sides with our own single-family residential. We have a school use on the north side, which is also an appropriate zone adjacent to the single family, or I'm sorry, adjacent to the duplexes. We foresee that these could be occupied by single parents or empty nesters. And then we also have North Liberty Road serving as our buffer along the east side of the parcel. So I can answer any other questions you might have about technical matters, but I suspect the biggest one will be the concern of duplexes. And I just wanted to kind of offer that insight about LEED ND and how they would view this. With that, I would open it up for any questions. Or I'll turn it over to Pat for a little bit of discussion. Thank you.
I would, well, I would just add that I lost my train of thought because I was thinking of something else, but um, because you covered a lot of what I was going to say. So I'm sorry, I'm spacing out.
Take your time.
I can't believe I had this thought that I was going to, oh, I know, I didn't mention that. I wasn't planning on speaking about, but I, Ryan made me think of it. You know, I developed these lots to sell to builders, and then the builders buy the lots, and then they build whatever product they can, whatever they're selling for or whatever. So, you know, they're telling me, the builders are telling me that it's just getting harder and harder and harder. You know, lots are getting more expensive, that, you know, they can't, they have to price these houses, these single-family houses at half a million dollars or more. And that's just shocking to me, you know, now that they, they're trying to get it under 500, and they just can't with just, with new lumber prices increasing and stuff like that. So, you know, when looking at an all-single-family layout, you know, it's concerning to me to, you know, wonder if I was going to be able to sell all these lots for the prices that they were going to cost. And then the builders, then in turn, we're going to have to turn around and try to sell houses for north of $500,000. So, you know, that made us start thinking about, you know, offering a differentiated product to these builders, but also, you know, because it seems like what the neighbors want. It's like, they want, they want a neighborhood of different product types so that they can have, you know, their grandparents, you know, be close by so that they can watch their kids while they're living in their single-family house, or they might have an aunt or an uncle that wants to live nearby that's single, or they just want to live in the same neighborhood and they don't, you know, they can't afford a $500,000 house, but they could potentially afford, you know, a duplex that's, you know, around maybe 350 or around that price point. So that's, I mean, Lauren said mostly what I was going to say, but, you know, we originally had looked at doing an 11-acre multifamily piece with 92 units with just single-family across the street, and that just, we had a good neighbor meeting on that, and that seemed okay, but it just didn't seem like a good neighborhood or a good transition from single-family lots across the street from an 11-acre multifamily parcel. So, you know, we then started to look at all single-family lots, and that seemed to lay out nicely as well. It's just, it didn't offer a good differentiated product for the neighborhood. So that's why we were proposing, you know, just taking that 11 acres and shrinking it down to seven acres, making it two-family homes, and they'll just be tucked back by the school in its own mini neighborhood, but still amongst the other neighborhood. And it just seemed like a better plan to me and to builders that I talked to and, you know, buyers. So that's, I guess, all I have to say. Sorry for rambling on. And sorry for losing my train of thought.
So hello, my name is Josie Bathke. I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I also am appointed to the Johnson County Livable Community, which is a commission or a policy group about creating a livable community for the aging. And so that was one of my questions was, or at least one of the positive things I want to say to you about looking for types of homes other than just single-family, because livable communities and for the aging are important. And I just was wondering on Mr. Hoffman's credentials, if some of those standards for the aging are those in on the designs? Are you guys taking that into account about possible opportunities about both the design elements that are good for our aging population, but also just the affordability as well?
So there are things in that LEED ND pertaining to a diversity, not only in income, but, you know, physical ability types. And so that would include aging. One thing I wanted to point out, and I don't know if it necessarily shows on this preliminary plat, but there is a proposed trail that Pat has gone above and beyond. There's technically not a city or a trail proposed at the current location where this would, a trail would connect the school parcel through the Green Belt Trail addition, which would be just to the, to the westerly limits of this Part 2B preliminary plat, and it would connect on to the, to the west, all the way over to Dubuque Street. So again, that particular trail is not, you know, part of the comp plan or any, it's any planning maps. Pat wants to have a walkable community and providing that link to a school site is a huge step in the right direction, which goes along with making it a, you know, walkable community for whatever age group you have. There are some other things that builders can do, and often, I've seen more of it, where they have zero-entry homes. Certainly, these lots could be set up for that as well.
Great. Thank you. And I always encourage that consideration. Thank you.
And I would, I would say also that these are planned to be mostly all ranch-style for there to be single-level homes, which, you know, I don't think they would be, if they were two-story, they would be against the school potentially, but the ones, you know, on the south side of the street would most likely all be ranch-style homes with a walkout basement for, you know, our thought is empty nesters with, you know, grandchildren that want to stay over. So.
Thank you both. And if we have more questions, we'll keep asking. Ryan, I just want to double-check. There weren't any more public comments added, right? You had mentioned there the good neighbor meeting, two people attended, but there weren't any added?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, more questions and comments. Josie, thanks for having that discussion. I just wanted to clarify, Pat and Lauren, or I think, Pat, you were just the one saying this, the, the lots on the south side, you're expecting them more to be ranch-style, but that isn't necess, like, that's not what we're reviewing tonight, right, Ryan? Those are a lot, these are lots that you said you sell to builders, and they decide what goes on the property, right? Like, that's your vision for it, but...
Yeah, and I guess I'd like to just add to that is, yeah, right now, we're considering zoning, right? And I think we could talk about that a little bit more when we look at the preliminary plat next to, but, you know, what, what you are being asked for as commissioners are, you know, is the zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan? And is the zoning compatible with the area? And we as staff believe it is. So we can, I can, we can look at the preliminary plat if you want, but really what we're asking is, is, you know, does the zoning fit in the area?
Thanks, Ryan, for that clarification. It is interesting because we're doing the zoning and the preliminary plat. I think I was jumping ahead there. So any more discussion or questions about the zoning before going on to the plat?
What is the, can you remind me the zoning north of this parcel on the comprehensive plan? What is that?
So it's, I could go back to it. So zoning map is, everything to the north is ID. We would envision that at some point that would become public zone because there'd be a school constructed there. But the subject property is, and this would be incorporated into the Green Belt Trail development is RS6. The future land use map is dominated by residential land use. So everything pretty much outside of the school area over here is residential. And the one thing I've noticed about the city's comprehensive plan, it's, it's not so granular that it, you know, starts to speak towards higher density here, lower density. Now, it has some policy decisions that higher-density thing should be, our residential usage should be closer to services. And I believe services typically are located towards arterial roads and North Liberty is definitely a arterial road.
I personally appreciate the RD10. I, I do just want to throw out there this, and I know lumber prices, I get it, but this idea that, you know, $350,000 home is average and affordable, maybe it's just from where I'm coming from. That's twice the price of my home, and we couldn't even get, like, I couldn't afford the duplex. So I think just being aware of the terminology and saying, well, these are affordable. It is cutting, I think, people out of still North Liberty.
That's double what, what Ryan just showed us is the average home price in Iowa, right? I suppose when you discuss, you know, average home price, I'm assuming your, you know, multifamily is incorporated in that as well. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think that'll be, Ryan, you've talked about doing a, you know, reviewing our comprehensive plan, and I think these are really good conversations to have, especially when you're going to go through that. Because we, you know, there are a lot of people, I think, like me too, who, who, you know, we can't afford a duplex in North Liberty at this time.
I guess I will just say, I mean, one of my concerns, right, with zoning more and more land to, to, you know, duplexes, is just eliminating that from being single-family. And one of my concerns is just trying to find affordable single-family homes for people. And so I guess I just have to balance, you know, allowing, you know, this to be made into multifamily home zoning, and hopefully that would then result in the single-family homes on the similar parcel next to it to maybe be, you know, cost a little bit less. It's just, you know, you know, once we zone this to duplexes, that's gone, that land's gone. And, but at the same time, I want affordable housing in North Liberty. I just don't know the best way to get there. And yes, lumber prices right now are through the roof, I understand. It's just a concern of mine that North Liberty just seems to be becoming expensive. And I'd like to, I'd like to try to figure out a better way, you know, whether that's, you know, much smaller single-family lots to build homes on or something. But I know that there's a large population out there that would prefer to live in a single-family home over, you know, a zero lot or duplex. I'm not, I have nothing against, I've lived in a zero lot before. I mean, that's how I started out, and it was fantastic. It worked very, very well for, for myself. Again, I guess I just, I just struggle with how to move forward and trying to make North Liberty a little bit more affordable, but balancing that we still have, you know, enough variance in housing options for people. And thank you, Brian, for sharing the sort of where we were in 2019 with the, with the various units in the different zones, resident or single-family, multifamily and duplex lots. So I don't think we're, we're definitely not filled with duplexes, even though I think when you first pull up onto North Liberty Road, there by the high school, it's just, there's a huge number of them that are right there already. So is this, you know, do we need this just a few blocks north of that? You know, I don't know.
And, and this is Josie again. I challenge all of the commission members to always think about Johnson County as a livable community and how right now we are significantly struggling on affordable and appropriate housing for our aging community. And so the Livable Community Commission that I'm on for Johnson County, we're always talking about that. And I know depending on what any of the North Liberty city officials would want, they're always welcome to come, or they'd always be open to coming and talking to city officials or planning and zoning on other ways we can encourage livable community because every issue you just talked about, Pat, now put that on top of aging and mobility and income limitations. So same concerns. It's a wonderful place. I get why everybody wants to move here. I, right now, live in a zero lot, so I get it all from Becky to Pat. So I agree, and it's not a Mr. Hoffman or Scanlon issue right now, but how we can help city officials think about this and move forward so we don't lose our place by outpricing too many people.
And so the reason that I was asking about the land use plan north of this area, I mean, I'm just really looking at this from a bigger picture perspective of, you know, how are we going to plan this area around Liberty Road going forward? And I think, Ryan, you had mentioned that having the higher density around Liberty Road, that makes sense to me. But if I look at this parcel and then, you know, I look at that continuing all along Liberty Road, then it would be, it would be the whole way around, right, on the, on the inside part of Liberty Road there. So to me, I'm just wondering, why, why is it going so far east and west if we're really looking at this being more of like the type of zoning for entering in from Liberty Road? So I'm trying to understand the long-term vision the city staff has for this.
No, that's an excellent point, by the way. And I don't like to necessarily say that we want to force density towards arterial roads, but I think, I think it's more appropriate to consider that there. I mean, I, I would say I anticipate, and Pat and Lauren have shared kind of, you know, some concepts of the overall development of the property, and it's predominantly single-family that we've seen with, with, you know, some higher-density multifamily or some two-families, you know, spread amongst it, some park space, which is definitely needed in that area. But we would expect it to be predominantly single-family. Now, the only thing I caution and I ring the bell a lot is, you know, I don't know what market conditions are going to do and, and how, you know, how prices are going to keep driving up. And so I think we have to be a little bit nimble. And this, you know, Pat developing this property all the way to North Liberty Road is going to take a long time. And, and, you know, who knows what trends and, you know, things or what people would like to live in, you know, would happen, you know, in 15, 25, 30 years.
Could I just share a little bit about, I think you had a question or questioning why maybe so far in the east-west direction that this R10 zoning has to go versus maybe more condensed along, right along North Liberty Road? There's a number of reasonings behind why it's not necessarily condensed right along North Liberty Road. And number one is we're limited basically one access point. And this is kind of getting into the preliminary plat part of it, but I'll keep it in general. But we're limited, we are limited to one access point coming off of North Liberty Road, and we are pretty much locked in at where that access point can be for the most part. Unfortunately, there's a fair amount of topography out there that doesn't allow us to go from that access point off North Liberty Road and connect adjacent to North Liberty Road. There's a significant grade change there. And so what happens is that particular parcel that's on Ryan's screen there, that, that whole R10 parcel kind of sits higher than the, than the road that would be coming in along the south side of it. It's too steep to connect, come in and go straight to that parcel and keep everything, yeah, we can't make that connection. Another benefit of having that, that placement is when you enter the neighborhood, you'll be entering a number of single-family homes and then even a stormwater management basin. You may ask, why that, why is that important versus why not, why not enter right into the duplex? Well, the reason is, is because there's more on-street parking available, better visibility, better street scene when you're coming into a neighborhood in a single-family, and I think we can all attest to this, versus a duplex area. So the duplexes are kind of tucked, tucked away from the rest of the single-family. And so it's secluded, yet it still has great connectivity to the nearby collector's street. So a little bit of technical background on that, but thank you.
And Lauren, I think what you were meaning to say is that, you know, when you drive in, you know, you have twice as many driveways. If there are duplexes and you have 20 lots, you have 40 driveways versus if there's a single-family and you're driving and there's half as many driveways, less potential for, you know, accidents with kids. And so this way, when it's tucked up, just the duplex lots are up, up the street, they won't have, it'll be a lot safer. And I think that's what you meant by the driving into that neighborhood.
Thank you for that. Any other questions, comments from the commission?
Hey, Ryan, just so that I'm clear on, I mean, RD10 can be both zero lots and duplex lots. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. Yeah.
In this case, these are, these are duplex lots, so two homes on one piece of property?
No, what they're, what they're proposing is to do the zero lot. And the reason why you see 20 lots here is because the way we do it here, and it makes total sense, is they build the duplex. they build the duplex. And then once you know where the party hall is, then they divide the lot. It's like, like a plot of survey.
All right. Thank you. I, that, that was, I, I apologize. That was just something that I was noticing that I just wanted to double check on. Thank you.
It's a good point. I, I should have mentioned.
All right. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments before?
Pat, Ryan, sorry. Becky, I, just curious, is there going to be an association here or is it in these units?
I haven't figured, I mean, there will definitely be an association and I assume it's just going to be one association for the single family and, and the duplex, or it'll just be, it'll be one or they'll be split into two, but I, I likely it'll be one. Of 50 lots.
Okay. Thank you.
But definitely a separate association.
Yeah. Okay. That's what, yeah. And I should have clarified, but that's what I was asking. Thank you.
Yeah. Down in Greenbelt One, we have its own association of 48 homes. And I just, I want to keep them smaller and, and then managing their own detention basins. So I'm kind of making it easier for them to ma- manage the stormwater and, rather than have one giant association managing this whole area. I think it's better to be 50 to 60 homes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before I ask for a motion on the zoning only? Okay. All right. May I have a motion for our recommendation to city council? Again, this is just on the zoning from RS 6 to RD 10. And Ryan does have the suggested one there if you want to use that.
I move that the planning commission accept the two listed findings and forward the zoning map amendment from RS 6 to RD 10 to the city council for rec- with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
All right. Motion by Staber, second by Ahern. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none. Roll call.
Ahern?
Aye.
Bathke?
Aye.
Staber?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Pentecost?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Kio?
Aye. All right. Motion passes. Agenda item number four is the preliminary plat for this area. So, Brian, if you want to do another staff presentation?
Yes. Thank you. Share a screen again. I will say to you, going through all the maps again, I assume we, we know that the, what the requested zoning is and, and what the request is. And, and here we can reiterate that it's 20 lots and 40 units to be zero lot line. But as we, we look at the preliminary plat, just like the original one, we look at the city code, which is section 180, 11, 3A, that sets for the preliminary plat's middle requirements, which staff is the opinion that they've met. And also section 180.12 of North Liberty Code sets for the subdivision plat design standards. And I'll, I'll move down to the preliminary plat, but there's probably two things I'd like to talk about, which is the cul-de-sac and the temporary fire access. Okay. We mentioned this a little bit on the other phase, but anytime you exceed 30 units, there needs to be a secondary access. And, and as we've talked about, they wish to develop, starting from the east and then moving west, eventually connecting to the Arlington Ridge subdivision. So when they, when they dropped this area out, they only had 30 lots here, so it didn't need a secondary access. But now this, as this project's coming back in, they are creating a secondary access and they, they show it through this lot right here. And it moves through the school board property and connects to Liberty Road. Obviously for fire rescue purposes, if, if Osage Lane down here gets blocked, you know, fire rescue can come in through a secondary access. Now, the preliminary plat contains notes that this lot's unbuildable until a, a secondary access to the west is provided. It'll be paved 10 feet from the curb, 10 feet outside of the right of way, both along the Berkshire Court and Liberty Lane. Talks about a maximum time period of being three years. And I, I learned late this evening that Pat had talked to the school board and, and they are agreeable in concept of this. Certainly will need for them to grant easements on a temporary basis for this, but we'll, we will certainly work that out. And the other point worth discussing is cul-de-sacs. The subdivision ordinance doesn't prohibit the cul-de-sacs, but we do want limited use of them. And instances are where there's a topography, limited access, such as an arterial road, which North Liberty Road is, then they are warranted. Lauren mentioned this, this grade change that we have here. And it would have been a challenge to kind of make this turn right here and connect to the south because you'd have it'd be a manageable incline, but you know, when you start having driveways off of that incline, it becomes a little bit of a challenge. And so the maximum length is 900 feet and it does meet that. As we kind of look at the southern lots, this is this great change here that we, that Pat had talked about as being most likely for kind of a walkout. So these are probably likely the, the one stories with the walkout at the bottom. So so there's three findings. Preliminary plat is consistent with comprehensive plans, which is residential. Proposed lots, the configuration of lots are consistent with the RD 10 bulk requirements. And the preliminary plat achieves consistency with ordinances with respect to submittal requirements and design standards. So staff does recommend that the commission accept the three listed findings and forward the request for the preliminary plat for 20 lots to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
Thanks, Ryan. I just want to offer it up if, if Lauren or Pat, if there's anything else you would like to add for, for this part.
Sure. I'll start off. So just to kind of hit on, is some of the reasons you don't like cul-de-sacs, obviously is connectivity issues from a standpoint of walkability. Also, oftentimes in a cul-de-sac situation, you'll have a long dead end of a water main, which is not ideal either. So in this case, I just wanted to point out that both of those items have been addressed via, there's a, a water main, water main link off the end of the cul-de-sac out to North Liberty Road to provide, provide a loop there. We also provide a pedestrian sidewalk link there. To kind of go, go back to what I mentioned earlier about the connectivity and walkability, Ryan, if you go over to the that school out lot where we show that trail connection, yeah, where Ryan's mouse, well, it's next to lot 150. Yeah, it comes up there. So I, I just want to kind of touch on the pedestrian accommodations and walkability that we, we talked of earlier. And lastly, just to kind of touch on the topography restraints, that cul-de-sac head is roughly 16 feet higher than it would be in front of lot 117, which is what, you know, entrance point off of North Liberty Road. So there's 17 foot of vertical drop there. And so that kind of begins to help understand why we can't make that connection from that cul-de-sac head down to that Osage Lane to the south there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I would just add that, you know, we're planning on the same landscape buffer that we're doing right now down at Greenbelt Trail, which goes along there. And it's, it's looking at, they just started planting it the last couple of days, but we're planning on a very similar, very lush, you know, screening along North Liberty Road, which I'm really excited about.
Pat, you went mute.
Sorry. I was just going to touch upon.
Oh, you went mute again.
Am I on mute still?
No, you're good now.
Oh, sorry. Maybe my elbow keeps turning off. We, you know, I was just going to say about the landscape buffer that we're planning a similar landscape buffer that we're doing down at Greenbelt Trail right now. They just started planting it a couple of days ago and we're just planning for a very lush screening along the arterial, some really nice plants. And you can see what we're planning because we're actually plant, we're planting it right now down at Greenbelt Trail. And I'm really excited about this landscape buffer. So I hope to continue. And we're also saving some trees that we were hoping to save. We'll see if we can. But there's a really nice oak tree on the corner of North Liberty Road and Osage Lane that hopefully will survive construction that, that my goal to save it. So it'll look really nice.
Thank you. I'm assuming, Brian, it's the same with public comment. I know Zoom doesn't make it easy for public comment, but I just feel like I always want to ask that too.
I appreciate that you do, but there, you have no additional comments.
Okay. Great. So further discussion or any discussion, sorry, from the commission, questions, comments?
I might just chime in here for a second, just for the sake of, you know, our previous discussion, now that we're looking at the the actual plat. I want to say kudos to Lauren and Pat. You know, the phase one of the Greenbelt Trail is already looking good. And I, in particular, I, I empathize with Patrick's thoughts about single family lots, but I also understand the need to pull a little density out of these developments. We ask a lot of our developers, and rightfully so, in in North Liberty and things have been working well because of that. But at the same time, you know, these developments are really expensive. What these guys are doing is pricey. Lauren has expensive. You know, it's just, you know, this is a lot of work and sewer and water and streets and all the infrastructure that has to go in here is really pricey. And I think, you know, especially when market forces like low interest rates and really high material prices, crazy demand. You know, they put a lot of heat on builders and developers, you know, try and get these things done quickly. Try and get them done and tick all kinds of boxes. It's not that easy. And so I just wanted to, you know, I, 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 I talked to a mortgage broker yesterday. I know, you know, just how crazy things are right now and how hard it is, especially to buy a single family house in North Liberty. But it's developments like this and significant improvement to the tax base that will, you know, we talk about affordable housing in the real estate industry. We talk about it as often subsidized. But if North Liberty can improve their tax base by continuing to add developments like these, it will go a long way to creating opportunities in other places in North Liberty to actually build, you know, what is technically affordable housing. You know, these duplexes, you know, quite honestly, you know, it's, it's a nice idea to think that, you know, maybe, you know, single folks and, and you know, and maybe, you know, empty nesters will, will be looking at these houses. I would say everybody's going to be looking at these houses, the duplexes, the zero lot lines, because that's just where we're at. You know, market wise, if things stay the way that they are for the next, you know, 12, 18 months. So I just wanted to add that just to the conversation. You know, based on, you know, kind of what, you know, what the commission was talking about, I empathize with everybody's thoughts about, you know, accessibility and affordability. And also, you know, the aesthetics of, you know, work density in our housing supply. You know, these are, it's a really difficult thing to balance. So I just wanted to give Lauren and Pat kudos for what they've done so far and the way that this plat looks to me. You know, I think it's really going to be a massive improvement to the area and especially, you know, like I said, a nice boost to the tax base. I know the bottom line is not everything. But, you know, we're going to get a lot of aesthetics. We're going to get some extra opportunities for people to buy, you know, lower priced homes, you know, in this area. And I think it's, I think it's actually all, you know, looking pretty good. So I just wanted to add that.
Thanks, Barry. Any other questions or comments from the commission before I ask for a motion? Got a little on me. Just want to make sure I can see you. Okay. All right. Well, seeing none. May I have a motion for our recommendation to city council?
I move that the planning commission accept the three listed conditions and forward the preliminary plat to the city council with a recommendation for approval. I'll second.
Motion by Ahern, second by, is it Heisler?
Yes.
Thank you. Every month I never think I get it right. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none. Roll call.
Staber?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Marx? Pentecost?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Bathke?
Aye.
Kio?
Aye. Great. Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda item number five, approval of the previous minutes. So may I have a, a motion to approve those?
I move to approve our minute, previous minutes.
I'll second. Staber?
Great. Motion by Mark, second by Staber. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great. Any old business?
Becky, would you mind if I took 90 seconds or less just to follow up on some of the comments that were made?
Brian, I think you are able to take more than 90 seconds if you.
Well, I, this is one of our longer meetings. I, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I, I really, I think the conversation's been great. And, and Barry, I thought your comments were spot on there. And I, I just would offer a, a couple of things that we see or hear. And would also say that as we get into that comp plan update, we can continue a lot of these conversations and we'll look for input from, from this group in the community. But I would say one of our, one of the biggest challenges we have with housing costs going up is land cost. And I was just telling Russ today, I, I was speaking to some colleagues in Pope County. And when we're, when we have developers buying property for 55 and 60,000 an acre, they have developers buying it for 27 to 30. Now, this was pre-COVID. But I suspect that gap is still there. So that, that's a big difference. And, you know, it's, it's a great problem to have when people want to be here, but when people want to be here, demand is high. And, and as a result, prices can be high as well. Another point I would just make is that we have a lot of newer housing versus some of these counties that you're seeing, I use Lynn as an example, they have older homes. And not that there's anything wrong with those older homes, it's just that newer housing is going to cost more because of more land costs. You have more development fees and you have, and as Barry just indicated, the developers have to, have to make that work. And, and I'll give you a, a, an example here in town. If you look at the Harvest Estates subdivision, just off of Jones Boulevard, and when we put in a sewer pipe, the, the main sewer pipe that fed, feeds that area, the per acre cost for the development to, to hook onto that was about $1,300. Now, on the east side by the high school, because of how the ground lays and the fact that costs go up, when we put that big pipe in, development on that side has to pay around 5,000 an acre. So that's a big difference. And now if you, when we go out to the west side and we're putting sewer underneath the interstate, that area out there that connects to, to that pipe is going to have to be about 6,500 or, excuse me, 8,500 an acre. So there are a lot of variables there. And, you know, all, all those costs adds up and it makes obviously housing costs go up. And the last thing I'll say, and I'm sorry, I'm way over 90 seconds. We do have a smaller lot zoning available. And those of you who are on the commission for a few years might remember when we approved that with the hope that we get developers' interest to, to build small lots, in essence, to make more affordable homes. And we've had very little interest. However, just recently, we talked to a developer who, who really had some good steam and was, was ready to, to start the prop development process on these smaller lots. What happened, there was a disagreement at, at the end with the landowner costs. They couldn't reach, and they thought they had an agreement on costs. It didn't happen. It fell through. Even with those small lots, the developer was estimating that it'd be about $250,000 for one of these homes, much cheaper than the half million that, the half million that Pat was talking about earlier, but nowhere near where, where I bought my first home from, at $68,000, you know. So I mean, and obviously times have changed. from, at sixty-eight thousand dollars, you know. So I mean, and obviously, times have changed, but they're just, my point on all this rambling is there are so many factors, and it is a challenge in Johnson County. I think it's a good challenge. I've lived in counties where we don't have these challenges, and we'll, we'll have to just continue those conversations. Thanks for the floor.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that, Ryan. I, I look forward to the conversations, especially about the comprehensive plan. I, I'm really, you know, Josie, I, I'd love to hear more about the commission you're on. If, if maybe we could have a, another commission, the other commission that you're on, if we could have a presentation during one of our meetings or another separate time for that, I think that would be, I would find that really interesting.
Well, and I, maybe I should coordinate with one or both of the Ryans maybe on that level, because it's a Johnson County Supervisors Commission. That's how I got appointed to it, because I represent North Liberty as a citizen. But yeah, I definitely think it's interesting in whether we coordinate something or not for a presentation, and Johnson County itself is working so hard. Everything Ryan and all the other commenters were saying today is really important and, and this amazing balance, because you and all of us are, and none of us are getting younger. So we also want to think about that accessibility and appropriate housing for the aging. So, yeah, I'll, I'll contact Ryan to see, both of the Ryans to see what we do.
All right, well, speaking about not getting younger, let's get this meeting going, because I got to go on a walk. I got to keep that, that heart rate up. So did we have any old business? Is that a no?
Sorry.
Okay. Got it. Any new business?
The only thing I just want to share is, is for next month, we anticipate having two rezonings. So that'll be coming forward. One's kind of an exciting, bulk would be exciting, actually, but one's on the west side of Kansas, a little bit north of Forever Green Road, so kind of a a medical user. So we, we're starting to see some demand in that area, which is pretty exciting. And I'm trying to do a rewrite of our off-street parking ordinance, which I know is really exciting for everybody. But hopefully, I can bring something to you in May, but that's, that's my goal.
Ryan, do you know, I joked about it at the beginning, but are there any official plans or scheduling and returning to full in-person meetings? Just for summer planning, it'd be interesting to know if we're planning on it anytime before August or September.
Ryan, you want to?
Yeah, I, you know, we, the, the short answer is no. However, I anticipate that sometime in May, we'll, we'll have a revised plan of operation for the city, which will include probably, most likely, probably a combination for those who are comfortable coming back, not in May, but here sometime later this summer, coming back in person. More to come. Sorry, I couldn't be more specific.
Nope, that's great. Just, we're talking about it at work and everything else, and so wanted to get that, because I also think the Zoom accessibility is great for, if you're out of the area. So we have commissioners miss fewer meetings. So I'm always a proponent, if you get it as an excuse or an exception or whatever, but keeping it always is a tool in our tool belt. So.
Well, they're working very well for our neighborhood, our Good Neighbor Meeting, so good participation. And it's, like you said, it's very accessible for people.
Yeah, I was going to add that about the Good Neighbor. I mean, I've never seen that many people in the reports attending a Good Neighbor Meeting. That's great. All right, is there anything else? Anyone wants to share? Okay, all right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I have motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Great, motion by Staber, second by Ahern. All in favor, say aye?